We're good.
How are you Scott? Do we have everybody Julia?
Yes, we do sir.
Okay, good evening everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, this meeting is being held remotely as a meeting with a quorum of the public body physically present is not practical or prudent due to the state's declaration of the duty impacts of COVID-19. There are also some other guidelines that will follow and Megan will, our village clerk will mention those now, Megan, did you want to start?
Sure thing, thank you Mr. President. Um, so here's some information for you guys, um, on June 12th, uh, 2020, the governor signed Senate Bill 2135, sorry, now Public Act 101-0640, the act which amends Sections 2.01 and 7 of the Open Meetings Act, the OMA. The act provides greater, uh, flexibility for public bodies to conduct business remotely when in person, when in-person attendance is not feasible due to a disaster. A summary of the key elements are as follows, you can also find this in your packet, sorry, I should've said that, um, under the village clerk section. Uh, the head of the public body declares that a meeting with a quorum of the public body physically present is not practical or prudent due to disaster. All members of the public body participating in the meeting are verified and can hear one another in all discussion and testimony. For open meetings, members of the public must be able to hear all of the discussions, testimony, and votes at the meetings and votes. If attendance at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the disaster, including the issued disaster declaration, the public body must make alternative arrangements and provide notice to the public. The alternative arrangements must allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes. At least one member of the body, chief legal counsel, or chief administrative officer must be physically present at the regular meeting location unless unfeasible due to the disaster. All votes must be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. The public body must keep a verbatim record of such meetings in the form of an audio or video recording and such verbatim records must be available to the public. So no motion or action, um, is required, the agenda has been modified in accordance with the new requirements, and all votes for tonight's meeting do require a roll call vote. And that's it.
Thank you Megan. So the only difference for us tonight would, would be the, uh, committee and collectors' report that we usually just voice vote would be a roll call vote. Okay, why don't we rise for the pledge of allegiance? Can you hear me? Julia? No.
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay Amanda, Megan, the, uh, members of the public body participating in such meetings remotely by audio are considered present for the purpose of establishing a forum. So Megan, why don't you call the rolls please?
Trustee Mepc?
Here.
Trustee Sheen? Uh, okay, uh, trustee Sheen is absent. Uh, trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Loner?
Here.
Trustee Zorro?
Here.
Trustee Seidel?
Here.
President DeCipio?
Here.
The quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you Megan. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is, um, a presentation by Police Chief, Jim Contoy's, Chief?
There we go. Okay, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you President DeCipio and the Board of Trustees for giving me this opportunity, uh, to briefly speak tonight. Uh, the recent events that have occurred within our country this past few weeks have left a lot of people questioning, uh, current law enforcement policies. Um, I've received a handful of emails myself from residents regarding the hashtag #8 Can't Wait campaign, and if our PD is currently following that. So for those of you that aren't aware, the hashtag #8 Can't Wait is a campaign to bring immediate change to police departments by adopting policies that can reduce the harm caused by police. This campaign is supported by Campaign Zero, which is a project of the nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, We the Protesters. So with that being said, I'd like to go through current PD practices, policies, and trainings as it relates to this campaign. So Julia, if you can share your screen with the PowerPoint? So tonight, we're gonna do a brief presentation, uh, overview on current police department practices and trainings. Uh, it is titled Community Relations, and we have also placed this on our website, uh, a community relations page with, uh, multiple tabs for further information. Go ahead and, next slide? So this is the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics, this is pretty standard for, uh, all law enforcement agencies throughout, uh, the United States, um, it says, "As a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve mankind, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all men to liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, maintain courageous calm in the face of danger, scorn, or ridicule, develop self-restraint, and be constantly mindful of the welfare of others. Honest in thought and deed in both my personal and official life, I will exemplary, I will be exemplary in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of the public, whatever I see or hear of a constitutional law where it is provided to me official capacity to be kept ever secret, unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty, I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings, prejudices, animosities, or friendships to influence my decisions. With no compromise for crime and with relentless prosecution of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously, without fear or favor, malice, or violence, and never accept gratitude. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true to the ethics of police service. I will never engage in acts of corruption or bribery, nor will I condone such acts by other police officers. I will cooperate with all legally authorized agencies and their representatives in the pursuit of justice. I know that I am alone and responsible for my standard of professional performance and will take every reasonable opportunity to enhance and improve my level of knowledge and competence. I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideas, dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement." So that Code of Ethics is in our, uh, policy manual, um, here that we have adopted with LexiPole, um, back in October of 19. So, next slide. Uh, we have our own mission statement, uh, it's also found on the website, uh, for those of you that can't see the PowerPoint, I will read that. Uh, it says, "The mission of the LaGrange Park Police Department is to keep the peace and maintain order in LaGrange Park, to safeguard the community and prevent crime, to uphold the law, and bring to justice those who break the law, to help the public, educate the community, and encourage compliance with the law, and in fulfilling this purpose to exercise appropriate discretion and sound judgment based on the best interest of the community." Next slide? So, the next, uh, eight slides are gonna be specifically focused on the hashtag #8 Can't Wait campaign and the eight questions that they're asking law enforcement professionals or law enforcement depart, departments to adopt policies that prohibit, uh, the next eight things that we're gonna talk about. So, the first one, um, that the #8 Can't Wait campaign talks about is, uh, regarding the banning of chokeholds and neck restraints. So, short answer to that is yes, uh, there is one exception, and that would be the justification of deadly force. Um, so this is pursuant to the Illinois Criminal Code, uh, the PD has a policy to not apply direct pressure to the throat, windpipe, or airway of a person with the intent to reduce or prevent the intake of air, uh, unless deadly force is justified. That is through the Illinois compiled statutes, that is a state law, uh, that we follow. The policy also bans a chokehold or any contact with the throat or neck to prevent the destruction of evidence by ingestion. So if somebody's trying to swallow a piece of evidence, uh, narcotics or whatnot, uh, the officers here are prohibited from, um, you know, preventing that swallowing, um, around the neck area. That is our current use of force policy, 300.4.2. Next slide? Uh, this, uh, the next question, uh, focuses on de-escalation, uh, and if there's a policy in place that officers need to follow, uh, before the utilization of deadly force, again, short answer is yes. Uh, the Police and Community Relations Improvement Act, which is 50, which of the ILCS, which is Illinois Compiled Statutes 727, and the Illinois Police Training Act 50 ILCA 705, mandate training requirements for active police officers in the state of Illinois. The Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board is the state agency mandated to oversee training requirements, curriculum, and standards. Uh, our police department's training routine does include de-escalation training yearly. Uh, a couple examples of those would be Police Law Institute, which is a monthly web-based training that all officers partake in, uh, it covers many of the mandates, uh, implemented by the state of Illinois. We have NEAMERD de-escalation training, and we do scenario-based training, uh, through the Megat Machine, which is, uh, shoot no shoot situations and other de-escalation measures. Uh, verbal warning before shooting, yes we are. Uh, LaGrange Park PD has a policy in place that states a verbal warning should precede the use of deadly force where feasible, uh, that's policy number 300.4. Again, I focus on where feasible, sometimes situations escalate and evolve so rapidly that, uh, seconds count, and sometimes officers, uh, aren't able to get that, um, verbal warning out before deadly force is applied. Next slide? Uh, do we, it require officers to exhaust all other alternatives, including non-force and less lethal force options, prior to resorting to deadly force? Uh, again, that answer is yes. Pursuant to LaGrange Park policy, officers are required to only use the amount of force that is reasonably necessary to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. So officers are accountable for any force used and are required to articulate in their report the level of force used and the reason why. So that again is under our use of force policy, 300.3, 300.3.2. Uh, do we ban shooting, uh, at a moving vehicle? Again, just like the banning of chokeholds, short answer is yes, uh, unless justification of deadly force. So we have a policy in place prohibiting the firing of a weapon at a moving vehicle or from a moving vehicle unless deadly force is justified. So such parameters are set forth in the Illinois Criminal Code 720 ILCS 5/7-5. Again, that is a subsection of our use of force policy, 300.4.1. Are LaGrange Park officers required to intervene and stop the use of excessive force by other officers? Again, yes, there is a policy in place that states that they have to intervene. Uh, any officer present and observing another using force that is clearly beyond what is objective, objectively reasonable. So that's, that's very key, objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when in a position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. An officer who observes another employee use force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should properly report these observations to a supervisor. All allegations of unreasonable force are investigated and determined, excessive, those involve could face discipline ranging from a reprimand to termination. So again, all allegations of reasonable force that are investigated and determined to be excessive, uh, the officer could face discipline, uh, ranging from a written reprimand, uh, to a suspension day all the way up to termination. Again, use of force policy 300.2.1. Uh, use of force continuum, uh, kind of a very open-ended question, yes, we have multiple policies that focus on different situations and different levels of force. Um, those range from, of course, officer presence, uh, verbal persuasion, physical force, aerosol irritants, less lethal, which is either a baton or a beanbag round, and then deadly force. Like I stated before, situations can evolve very rapidly, uh, so there might be where an officer has to go from a verbal persuasion to a less lethal and skip three or four, uh, level three or four based on the, uh, egregious, uh, of the situation. Uh, use of force reporting, every time an officer utilizes force beyond, uh, physical, physical presence or, um, what they would consider normal, uh, part of their duty, taking someone into custody that is cooperative, handcuffing somebody, uh, for driving on a suspended license or a retail theft, as long as there's no resistance and no force needed, uh, the officer does not need to complete a use of force. If there's anything above, uh, normal handcuffing and there's any force placed by the officer, uh, they need to, they're required to complete a use of force, uh, report. All officers, uh, uh, that utilize physical force, aerosol irritants, less lethal, or deadly force are required to complete one, and then the review of said incident is then completed by supervisory staff. Again, use of force policy 300.5. So, this right here focuses more on training. So several years ago, um, Illinois mandated law enforcement training, um, year, uh, I should say, uh, every so many years, there's certain, uh, classifications of training that officers need to have, from their initial hire to every year training, every two years, three, four, and five. So I'm not gonna go through these, um, we can send these out to the, uh, board members, um, after the meeting, the ones that don't have access to the, uh, the viewing of the PowerPoint right now. But your basic one-year initial hires are, is your academy, your firearms training, um, uh, the, uh, naloxone training, uh, we don't carry epinephrine pens, um, and then every year, of course, is firearms, law update, use of force, hazmat, um, and then all chiefs and deputy chiefs have to complete 20 hours of continuing ed every year and submit that to the Training and Standards Board. Uh, two years of CPR AED, and then every three years is constitutional and proper use of authority, procedural justice, civil rights, human rights, cultural competency, mental health awareness and response, reporting child abuse and neglect, officer wellness, and then trauma, uh, informed response and investigation of sexual assault or abuse, and then you have the specialty certifications, which is lead homicide or field sobriety testing, and then the psychology of domestic violence is every five years. So that's mandated training that we need to report to the, uh, Training and Standards Board, uh, every year, and we work in conjunction with NEAMERD, who is our mobile training, uh, MTU number three, who does that for us. So we generally go to NEAMERD classes, they submit all the information to the Training and Standards Board for us, for documentation. Um, and then value-added departmental training, which is above and beyond the state mandates. Um, so the police department takes great pride in sending officers to value-added training, uh, we feel that it will provide them with a clear understanding of a specified topic. Uh, generally, these, uh, classes are handpicked by the individual officers, as most of them, if not all of them, are eager to further their knowledge within law enforcement. So we'll go ahead and click on that. There's between 130 and 140 value-added classes that, uh, at least one member, if not multiple members of this agency, uh, have attended, and a lot of those are 40-hour or state-certified courses. Um, so again, there's between 130 and 140. One of the things that I'm proud of, uh, and we should be proud of as a village, is the crisis intervention, uh, team training. Uh, we currently have 11 officers that are certified in that, which is a remarkable amount of officers based on the total that we have, uh, and if it wasn't for the COVID pandemic, we probably would've had 16 or 17 by now. So, which is, uh, we are probably, uh, one of the top agencies in the state based on number of officers, uh, and how many we have that are certified in that 40-hour CIT. But again, this is all available on the website, uh, for your perusing, uh, at your pleasure. Again, a lot of these classes, the officers come to us and ask if they can go, uh, I'm not one to say no, um, you know, i- if it means me working the street to send these guys and girls to a class so that they can better themselves as a law enforcement officer, I'm all for it. So I'm sure there's gonna be a question on what is LexiPole? So like I stated earlier in the, uh, presentation, um, the Village Board graciously approved the police department, um, to join forces with LexiPole back in October of 19. Um, so LexiPole is the leading content, policy, and training platform for public safety and local governments that directly serves more than 7,500 police departments. LexiPole policies are state-specific, uh, and fully customizable for each individual agency. The le, the best part about LexiPole is that they continuously monitor any legislative changes, and they amend their policies based on case law. So, and anytime there's a policy that gets amended, they, they alert, uh, each individual police department or subscriber of their policies, um, and then the officers have to go ahead and acknowledge those changes. So, does anybody have any questions? I know I kinda flew through it, and I apologize for that.
Any questions for Chief from the board?
Um, I do, Mr. President, and Tim. Uh, Chief, um, uh, very, very thorough, um, much appreciated to clarify this information, um, that I know helps protect the officer as well as the village. Uh, what obligation does the officer have if they, if he or she happens to become involved in off-duty situations?
So there's, there's no requirement for an officer to get involved in an incident while off-duty. If they do choose to, uh, you know, partake in an incident while off-duty, they're required to, uh, stand by until the, uh, if they do take law enforcement action, to, uh, stand by until that local department shows up and then cooperate any way they can. If they are involved in an off-duty incident out of town, uh, or even in town, uh, they're required to, uh, generate a case report and then complete documentation, uh, specifically if use of force is needed.
And is the village also, I'll say liable, if that's the correct term in, in this case, is it that the officer in an off-duty situation does become involved and doesn't necessarily follow the policies? Can that transcend to us?
That's a great question, uh, Kathy, what do you, what do you think?
I would say only if it's a pattern of, um, uh, sanctioning that type of behavior. Like, the general rule is, an employer's not, uh, liable for actions of the employees while not at work.
I think it all depends on if they're working under the color of the law as well.
Yeah, I mean...
There's a lot of moving parts there.
If, if someone were able to prove that the village engaged in a pattern where off-duty officers were allowed to, uh, work in crime scenes and, and be, jump into situations where perhaps they weren't warranted, then we might have liability, but it's, it's gotta be a very specific fact, case like that, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you trustee Loner, anyone, any other trustees, trustee Mepc?
Yes sir, I, I, I don't have a, uh, a question as much as, as a comment, uh, thank you Chief Contoy for the, for the presentation. Um, one thing that I'm proud about of LaGrange Park is the high ethical standard of our officers, of our police department, and, and that extends, especially to the last two chiefs and, and the officers there, if there's a problem, it's dealt with specifically, and, and I'm, I'm proud that, um, I, I, I understand the national concern and, and I know it, uh, but it, it does not have a presence in LaGrange Park, and I commend, uh, all the officers, especially on community outreach and the training, we, we recognize the standards that, that Chief Contoy's pointed out, it's in the manual. Um, you know, not to mention community outreach with Sergeant Fellers, um, Officer Dempsey, I know with the Police Academy, uh, Citizens Police Academy, and many of the things we do to foster the, the dialogue and the community relations, uh, with all citizens, because I, I know this force is, is committed to all citizens of LaGrange Park, regardless demographics, creed, anything. Uh, so, so that's my comment, thank you sir.
Thank you trustee Mepc. Anyone else have any comments? Chief, I wanna thank you for putting all this together for us, it's very informative, something we should all know. Um, I have one question, and it was used in a couple instances where there was a justification of deadly force. Uh, one in particular was on the chokeholds and neck restraints, and I can't remember what the other category was.
Shooting in a moving vehicle?
Okay, so these are extreme cases, can you, I mean, is there any example you can give?
Yeah, so, so this would be, uh, a life or death situation, say the officer gets into a physical confrontation with someone, they're rolling around on the ground, um, you know, the, the, the person that the officer is on the ground with is able to disarm them, um, or, or the officer fears that his life or her life, uh, could potentially end because of this struggle, uh, that would be a justification of deadly force. As far as shooting in a moving vehicle, uh, if the officer, uh, has broken legs, uh, and can't move out of the street, and a vehicle is approaching him at a, him or her at a high rate of speed, then the only thing that the officer can do to save himself or, or herself is shooting into the vehicle, uh, you know, of course, that, that, uh, you know, would be justified. Um, I hope to never have to, uh, you know, be involved in anything like this, uh, in my career, uh, I never, I never thought that I would see anything like what's going on, uh, in, currently in society in my career, um, you know, i- i- I'm almost speechless to this, um, this is something that, that, you know, as a society we're dealing with, uh, and as law enforcement professionals, um, you know, we need to work on. So, um, you know, I, I, I appreciate you guys taking the time, letting me give the presentation. I just wanted to remind everyone that, 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 uh, we, we, uh, implemented a community relations page today on the police department, uh, application of the website. Uh, it has, uh, multitudes of information as well as some of the trainings we've partaken in, um, our, uh, law enforcement code of ethics, our mission statement, um, looks like, uh, it's being pulled up right now, so the second tab down, community relations, if you click on that, it kinda talks about LaGrange Park, what we are, what we strive for, what we believe in, um, and then there's a couple other things. There are so, uh, three policies that, uh, um, the community has access to, uh, which is use of force, I believe it's, uh, discrimination, uh, and bias-based policing, that is all accessible, our whole use of force policy, uh, is available for all the residents to look at, uh, based on the website.
Thank you Chief, and I would like to, to make a comment too, that, uh, uh, we're grateful for all that you do and all the officers do, and, and we're grateful that you had come forward, I mean, I didn't ask you, I don't know if any board member asked you, but to bring this information forward on your own initiative is to be commended, and I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, public participation of agenda-related items only, if anyone, Julia? Julia, did you wave your hand or something? No?
No. I was trying to stop sharing my screen.
Is there anyone, any public member that's, that's joined us that would like to make a comment? Okay, uh, moving on to consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, the following items are on the consent agenda tonight for approval. A, approval of minutes, one, village board meeting, May 26th, 2020, two, village board work session, June 9th, 2020. B, action, vehicle license and dog license amendments, motion to approve an ordinance amending the Village of LaGrange Park Municipal Motion to approve an ordinance amending the Village of LaGrange Park Municipal Code regarding vehicle licenses and animal licenses. C, action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. And D, action, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and the next village board meeting with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees, um, at its next meeting.
Thank you, Megan. A motion to approve consent agenda is reported. Don't move. Second? Motion second, Megan, call the roll.
Trustee Metcalf?
Yes.
Trustee Kusara?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
And Trustee Seidel? The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Moving on to village managers' report, Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just one quick item to report. As we anticipate moving into Phase Four this Friday, and the state has released its guidelines for Phase Four, uh, staff anticipates the ability for us to return to open meetings with the board starting at the July work session. Uh, so the guidelines for Phase Four, uh, have a maximum requirement of fifty people gathering in a space. Uh, we feel that the village board, uh, chambers can accommodate a public meeting, and, uh, Emily and I worked on a little bit of mathematics this afternoon just to make sure, uh, that the space within the boardroom could accommodate, safely accommodate with social distancing the public meeting, and we believe that, uh, we can with, uh, sixteen members of board and staff, uh, and well, as well as accommodate, um, possibly about twenty members of the public. Uh, the meeting for the work sessions won't quite look the same. We'll have to, uh, provide for seating arrangements to maintain the social distancing, but we will make sure that everything is organized in preparation for that first meeting unless if there's any issues, uh, or questions or concerns from the board or staff. And we will also continue to organize and prepare, uh, for the board meetings as well starting in July. And with that, I'll take any questions or concerns.
Any trustees have any questions? No? Okay, thank you, Julia.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Julia. Moving on to administration committee, Trustee Seidel?
Hi, I will start with the administration report. Um, the village hall reopening, village hall reopened to the public on Monday, June fifteenth. Due to the need to conduct additional cleaning in accordance with CVC and IDPH guidelines, village hall hours will be limited to nine AM to four-thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Please use the north doors on Woodlawn as the south doors will remain locked. All visitors will be required to wear a face covering and practice social distancing both within and outside the building. Please note that no building permits will be issued over the counter, and all building permit applications must be completed and dropped off in the village hall lobby. For resident convenience, a drop box for water bill and parking ticket payments is available twenty-four-seven in the village hall foyer. Questions, please call village hall at seven oh eight three five four zero two two five. Arbor Day twenty-twenty, the twenty-twenty Arbor Day ceremony has not yet been scheduled in hopeful anticipation of less restrictive guidelines and gatherings in the next few weeks. We are planning for a date in July. This year, the village will plant a dingo tree in memory of Jack Ryder. Jack was nominated by his wife Deborah, as well as by friends, Heidi and Tom Hampton. Both nominations mention Jack's involvement in the community through service and volunteer opportunities. Recently, Jack made his mission to research and identify local veterans so their names could be added to the wall at Memorial Park. Jack found over nineteen veterans from LaGrange Park through his extensive research in the hopes these soldiers would be given the recognition they deserved and that their families would know that they are still being honored. Jack turned all his research into this, two days before he passed, and also great pride in being from LaGrange Park. Youth commission, the village is seeking five new youth commissioners to serve on the youth commission. The youth commission serves alongside the other village board committees, which makes recommendation to the village board. The commissioners receive the same agenda and discuss the same issues that the village board discussed at their meetings. Meetings are held once a month, September through June, on Monday evenings. To learn more about the commission and to apply, please visit the village website. Vehicle stickers and dog license renewal, due to COVID-nineteen, vehicle sticker and dog tag due dates have been extended to October thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Stickers with the July thirty-first, twenty-twenty expiration date are valid until October thirty-first. Questions regarding the deadline extension may be directed to village hall at seven oh eight three five four zero two two five. Village offices closed, village offices will be closed on Friday, July third, in accordance with Independence Day. Regular office hours will resume on Monday, July sixth, at eight-thirty AM. I have one action item for tonight regarding suspension of block parties, garage sales, plant shows, et cetera, due to COVID-nineteen. General background, on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, the village board suspended certain activities which encouraged people to congregate in order to adhere to the Phase Three regulations under Governor Pritzker's Restore Illinois Plan. These activities include a block parties, house, apartment, garage, and yard sales, art and craft shows, and plant shows, indoor or outdoor, and sidewalk sales. The suspension is set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, unless further extended by the village board. As of the state of this meeting, the state of Illinois remains in Phase Three, which limits all gatherings to ten people or less. Staff anticipates our region may move to Phase Four before the end of June, but this remains unconfirmed and as of the writing of this memo. As currently outlined, Phase Four permits gathering up to fifty people, however, the specific regulations pertaining to Phase Four are unknown. Based upon the current Phase Four guidelines, staff recommended allowing garage sales, yard sales, arts and craft shows, plant shows, and sidewalk sales to resume beginning July first. These activities are unlikely to draw crowds of more than fifty people at any given time, and if proper precautions are taken, such as wearing face coverings, hand sanitizer, disinfecting surfaces, et cetera, can be conducted in a safe manner. Due to the potential for block parties to draw more than fifty people and the nature of the activities that occur during block parties, use of bounce houses, sharing of food, children's game extension, staff recommends the village extend the suspension of block parties until July work session, July fourteenth. At the time of the work session, the specific regulations for Phase Four should be known by the village board. We'll be able to reevaluate whether block parties may commence safely under these guidelines. This item is for discussion and action, and I make a motion to suspend block parties through July fourteenth, twenty-twenty.
Second? Second, the discussion? Trustee Seidel?
We have discussed this before, so I'm in support of extending it until July.
Trustee Zora?
I'm in support of extending it until July also. It, it seems like it's gonna change next month, so I'm fine with holding off one more month.
Trustee Kusara?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, it seems that, um, with this COVID-nineteen, uh, everything seems to be on a two-week cycle from, uh, being, uh, potentially, um, near this or, or being, uh, impacted by it, so I totally agree, and let's wait another couple of weeks and make sure our residents are safe.
Trustee Lawner? Thank you, Mr. President. Um, am I, am I wrong, but I, I thought the state is moving into Phase Four this Friday? Is that correct information?
Sorry, had to unmute. Um, that, that is correct. Um, that is what the governor has announced. That was not announced at the time that staff prepared the memo last week, um, but it has, has been announced that we will be moving to Phase Four on Friday. Um, a number of the Phase Four regulations have also been released since the memo was written. Um, they, the restriction of up to fifty people does remain in place. Um, one of, staff has had several discussions about block parties and whether or not, um, we feel like they can be safely conducted. Um, arguably, people can maintain the six-foot distance during a block party. It would be challenging to, um, to enforce the total number of people because people are constantly moving in and out and around during block parties. Um, so one of the concerns is, uh, by allowing block parties to happen, we are, um, condoning the gathering of people which may exceed fifty, and then we are also taking upon ourselves the responsibility of enforcing it. Um, whereas if we don't allow them, uh, at least for the next couple of weeks until, um, you know, things are further, further known, um, people may continue to gather in their front yards and things like that, but, um, we are not, uh, necessarily condoning that activity or taking on any enforcement responsibility of it.
Um, have we had, have we had specific requests for block parties that we've had to deny?
We have had requests for block parties. I unfortunately can't tell you how many because those do go through our executive secretary, Sandy, um, I wanna say maybe a handful, uh, four or five. Uh, this is a big block party community, uh, which is a great thing. People do really value the block parties, um, here, and, you know, it is a tough thing for us to, to tell people no, um, when it's an activity that we do think really is great for building community. Um, Julia did look into what some other communities are doing now. Um, it looks like there are a couple communities that, uh, will allow block parties to resume in Phase Four. Uh, there are a couple that, uh, it doesn't appear are going to allow them to, to, um, proceed, so there's just not a whole lot of information out there, a whole lot of data out there yet, um, exactly about how communities are handling this.
Okay, I wish I should have clarified a little bit, um, requests for block parties to occur like right away, within the next week. I mean, I know they'll be looking to schedule them down the road later in the summer, but for immediate scheduling?
Uh, honestly, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I know we received inquiries a few weeks ago about block parties, but I, I couldn't tell you, um, if those were for block parties that would occur in the next week or two. Um, I suspect there are people that typically have them, uh, in early July or July fourth, but I don't know if we received any of those requests.
I, I guess I'm, I'm inclined to subscribe to, you know, opening, opening this up. I mean, there've been various gatherings of groups, uh, where people have taken on the individual and group responsibilities with the social distancing, the, the mass, I, I, I guess I feel that the people that are going to do that are going to do that, and in two weeks, if they aren't going to do it, they aren't going to do it. So, uh, we're opening the other activities up, uh, as we said that we would at the end of the month, uh, or with the, or, um, my inclination would be to allow the, the block parties to proceed and have the responsibility on the individuals. In most cases, it's going to include kids. Um, I would sure hope to think that the parents are going to do what they feel is the right thing to do, um, in, in this difficult time. So my inclination is to, i- i- is, is to open it up with Phase Four. Any other trustees? Trustee Metcalf?
Uh, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, I understand, uh, Trustee Lawner's comments fully, uh, more of a liberty kind of person, but, um, spending it for two more weeks, to me, is, is probably not the worst thing. I've seen some, some gatherings that, that don't follow social distancing, you know, with, with the policy in place, so, um, I support this, this suspension of block parties, uh, but I do, I do like what's in the rest of the floor, opening up garage sales and some of the other things. We need to start getting society back to normal, but we also need to be responsible.
Thank you, Trustee Metcalf. Okay, so the motion to suspend block parties through July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, Megan, will you call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Metcalf?
Yes.
Trustee Kusara?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
No.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion, uh, passes by a vote of four to five, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Trustee Seidel. Okay, moving on to the building and zoning committee, Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna report the building department activities for last month, May of twenty-twenty. Sixty-nine building permits were issued in May compared to one hundred and two last May. Two hundred and forty-five permits have been issued this year compared to two hundred and seventy-eight last year. Permits we used collective for the month were less than one-half of what they were last year in May. Four hundred and three inspections have been conducted so far compared to four hundred and twenty-two during the same period last year. Clover Garden Center received final approval, and they are open now. Patrick met with homeowners on several drainage complaints filed related to the heavy rains and flooding. Mark Volk from Hancock was also, also provided several options to correct or lessen the flooding and will provide written recommendations to the residents. Patrick worked with Matone on outstanding issues and conducted a reinfection of the patio, which received a final inspection and occupancy. A temporary occupancy permit was approved, so the patio is obviously open for business now too. Yes, also worked with Posto Thirty-One to allow for temporary outdoor dining, additional tables and seating in front of their restaurant in response to the state's reopening plan, and code enforcement had a very busy month with both new and filed complaints. More than thirty complaints were fielded, the most in any May since two thousand and eight, when the complaint law was created, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Moving on to engineering capital projects, Trustee Kusara?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, let me make sure I'm not on mute. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, engineering capital report, capital project summer report from May twenty-twenty. I have three items tonight, Mr. President. The Thirty-First Street Water Main Project, bid opening was on April thirtieth. The low bidder and contractor rememer for award was ALAM Concrete Contractors. The village voted to approve ALAM at the workshop meeting on May twelfth. Contracts and other administrative documents were sent to ALAM for execution. Work is expected to commence in June and be completed before the end of the construction season. Item number two, pre-construction Inc. began work on the contract with the village before the alley and off-street parking project. The alleys between Raymond Avenue and Illama Terrace just north of Thirty-First Street will be reconstructed in concrete, and new public parking spaces will be built on the west side of Beach Avenue north of Thirty-First Street. The new parking stalls will be installed using a decorative stamped and colored concrete design. At the end of May, the curb alleys and alley return pavements have been poured. The driveway apron, sidewalks, and the street patches will be completed in June. Design work for LaGrange Road Water Main, Phase Two continues. This part of the project encompasses installing water mains on LaGrange Road from Garfield Avenue north and east to connection at Thirty-First Street, and then north and west through the alley to another connection on LaGrange Road. The process of obtaining required easements is underway. The project is scheduled to be built in the twenty-one construction season. That's all I have to report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Kusara. Uh, public safety committee, Trustee Lawner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, from the public safety area two reports this evening. First of all, uh, the police department through the month of May, total number of crimes this year are slightly lower than last year at this time, with one hundred and nineteen reported this year compared to one hundred and ninety-nine last year. Traffic enforcement? Yes? Vote. Traffic enforcement is at one thousand and ninety-five total. Tickets issued through May of twenty-twenty. Overall, activity have like four or less? With two hundred and seventy-one total incidents reported through May of twenty-twenty compared to three thousand five hundred and thirty-five between the traffic. Through May of twenty-nineteen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Sorry, a little bit, but we're back, I think. Okay. Probationary Police Officer Denise Bergovic will be starting at the Police Training Institute on Sunday, June twenty-eighth. Her anticipated graduation date from the Police Academy will be September eleventh. We welcome Denise. Please follow us on social media accounts as we frequently use platforms to update the community on response procedures as well as the Police Department activities and their staff. Aggressive being Twitter is at LaGrange Park PD. Facebook is LaGrange Park Police Department, and Instagram is at LaGrange Park PD. And as always, a friendly reminder to our residents about securing one's personal property at all times. Please lock your vehicles in your residence, especially during overnight hours. If you are going on vacation, please utilize the new online vacation watch portal, frontline P S S dot com slash LaGrange Park, or log onto the, the village's website and access the portal under the Police Department page. If you do not have internet access, feel free to fill out a vacation watch card at the Police Department between the hours of nine AM and four thirty PM. And from the Fire Department area for the month of May. EMS incidents this month, total one hundred and thirty-six. There have been six hundred and thirty-five year-to-date compared to five hundred and ninety-two year-to-date in two thousand nineteen. Fire rescue incidents this month were fifty-six, and there have been one hundred and eighty-one year-to-date compared to two hundred and forty-seven year-to-date in two thousand nineteen. Throughout the month, a lot of action was taken related to the pandemic. We responded to various calls for patients with COVID-nineteen, updated policies related to response as things changed, attended many conference calls and webinars, and obtained additional PPE and disinfectant supplies. The Starcom Twenty-One radio system went live and all fire operations moved over to the new system, with personnel being trained on such. Is a great advancement in our communications abilities. Larger training sessions remained suspended. Personnel attended training by video conference and completed self-study assignments on various topics. Personnel participated in many birthday drive-by celebrations, a parade for tenants and healthcare workers at Flumet Place, and the parade for healthcare workers at Loyola. Staff witnessed the pressure test of the sprinkler system for the new home at six twenty-four North Edgewood, and a test of a new firearm system was completed for Phillips Flowers. Fire personnel responded to various calls for assistance during the heavy rain and flooding. Personnel filmed a short segment for participation in the virtual pet parade. Nine candidates graduated from the basic operations fire academy in Romeo Ville. Out of the approximate forty-five classes that graduated this academy, this class ranked number four in overall scoring, and sent the fire personnel into scoring in the ninety percentile for the class. A few, uh, significant events to report on over the course of the last month are ladder truck responded to assist the Westchester with a house fire on Bristol on the twelfth of May. On the thirteenth of May, we responded to a garage fire involving an outside wall at eleven eleven Meadow Press. On the nineteenth of May, an engine company chief and investigator assisted Brookfield with a garage fire. Quite a busy month. Um, on May twenty-second, a hazardous material technician and chief responded to the Argon National Laddatory to assist with a chemical incident. On the twenty-fourth of May, our ladder truck chief and investigator responded to assist the book with a fire in a truck repair facility. And on the twenty-seventh of May, an engine and chief responded to assist the Grange with a fire in an attached garage, uh, garage, and that concludes my report from the public safety area this evening, Mr. President. You're on mute again. Ryan, now, in the essence of trustee, I've asked Trustee Messick to give the Public Works Committee report. Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, Department of Public Works monthly report for May of two thousand twenty. The COVID nineteen public works continue with modified work schedules through the month of May to maintain the health of the employees. The program began the first full week of May with crews making multiple passes throughout town. The annual mulch program also took place in May with Department of Public Works delivering over two hundred and seventy-five loads of, of mulch to every resident who had requested the service. Hydrant flushing was completed south of Thirty-First Street in the center section of town. Flushing has continued in the center section of north of Thirty-First Street. Various street repairs were made to pavement, and pavement patching will continue throughout the summer. Brains, water, and sewer work orders were completed along with resident and tree concerns and general construction inquiries. Two six-inch water mains were repaired along with the replacement of thirty-five feet of water main on the four hundred block of Sherwood leading into homestead apartments. Water meters were read in section number two, and fifteen monthly bacterial samples were taken along with UCMR four quarterly samples. And routine maintenance to the department fleet and equipment was performed as well as police and fire vehicles as needed. And that concludes the monthly report. There is two action items. First being, uh, tree maintenance program contracts, one-year extension. The purpose is to recommend a one-year extension of the current tree maintenance program contracts, tree removal, stump removal, trimming, general tree maintenance, and emergency tree work through fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. General background is the village needs contractor assistance to remove dead parkway trees, removal of tree stumps, tree trimming, performing general tree maintenance and emergency tree work. This assistance is based on the limited equipment and resources available of the Public Works Department. Village's current contractors, Winkler Tree Service and AB Landscaping and Tree Service, have again agreed to hold their fiscal year fifteen sixteen rates through the end of fiscal two thousand twenty-one. Staff believes that this is the best interest to retain the services of current contractors at the fiscal year fifteen sixteen rates. Staff recommends approving a one-year contract extension at the board meeting today on Jul- June twenty-third, two thousand twenty. So I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year contract extension with Winkler Tree Service, AB Landscaping, and, and Tree for any area and authorize village to execute necessary, necessary documents.
I would pause in just a second. Okay. Trustee Messick?
Um, anytime you can get the same rates for five years, uh, I would suggest, I think it's, uh, it's good fiscal policy and it is something that, that Public Works requires, uh, to, to serve the residents.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Lawner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I know I frequently ask, but I'll ask the same question again. No obligation, no legal requirement for us to go out and confirm that. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Nothing?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Trustee Cussera?
In complete agreement, Mr. President.
Trustee Zora?
Mm, I agree. We're happy with them, and we've had them for five years at this rate. I think it's foolish not to renew it with them.
Trustee Seidel?
I agree, and I'm in support of this as well.
Thank you, Trustee Seidel. Megan, call the roll, please.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora? Trustee Zora, sorry, I didn't hear.
Trustee Zora? It was like she's frozen.
I think she might be frozen, yeah.
She hasn't moved. She is frozen.
Does that keep going, or?
Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't hear anything. What did you say?
Uh, okay, I'm sorry. I was, uh, just asking for your vote on the last.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. I didn't hear anything. Remember, you were silent for some reason.
Thanks. All right, Trustee Seidel?
I think we lost her. I think that's what happened is we lost the caller somehow, and that, and we lost the audio.
Oh, makes sense. Can you not hear me?
Oh, no, I can't. I can hear you now.
Oh, okay, I'm like, yes, Megan.
Okay, thanks. All right, the motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Wow, that took a while. Thank you, Megan. Trustee Messick, is that it? That's your more?
No, there's one more action item, Mr. President. Um... The purpose of this is to approve a resolution for the maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. The general background is, is motor fuel tax funds are used to perform maintenance-related activity in the street right of way. These activities include street light and traffic signal maintenance, electricity for street lights, sidewalk replacement, pavement markings, crack ceiling, road salt, and materials for street maintenance. Village must request expenditures and have authorization for the use of motor fuel tax funds annually from IDOT. Resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code has been prepared to outline the maintenance operations expenses. In this fiscal year, the village has budgeted the motor fuel tax fund four hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars for this work. Staff recommends approval of this resolution at the village board meeting today, June twenty-third, two thousand twenty. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for the expenditure of four hundred and seventy, or four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, uh, five hundred dollars in MFT funds.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Trustee Messick?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I am in full support of this. This is, is budgeted in a, it's, it's a logical expenditure for our residents.
Trustee Seidel?
I'm in full support of this as well.
Trustee Zora?
I support it.
Trustee Cussera?
Hi, I go, Trustee Lawner.
And Trustee Lawner?
I think it's President, nothing to add. I support.
Okay, Megan, call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
And Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Trustee Messick.
Thank you.
Get ready, Cussera next. So Finance Committee, Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, financial update as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Uh, fiscal year-to-date, general fund revenue is at four point seven percent of the annual budget and about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, or twenty-four point seven percent lower than the prior year. Primary reason for the decrease is a forty-nine point eight percent drop in income tax receipts as a result of the coronavirus crisis. The May income tax receipt is usually the largest of the year as it corresponds to April tax filing due date. This year, the tax filing due date was postponed until Ju- July fifteenth, therefore, some of the May decreases due to the delay in receipts that will arrive later this summer. The Illinois Municipal League is projecting an overall ten point two percent decline in the income tax over the year, so likely to see a rebound over the coming months. Property tax receipts are slightly lower compared to prior year. Other local taxes are lower by about a ten thousand dollars and nine percent due primarily due to lower telecom taxes. Sales receipts were eleven point four percent higher than the prior year. May tax receipts reflect February sales. License revenue is slightly higher than last year. Permit receipts are down forty-three point five percent, or about twelve thousand five hundred dollars compared to the prior year. Energy governmental receipts are down about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, or forty-three point four percent compared to last year, due to a forty-nine point eight percent decline in the income tax as a result of the coronavirus crisis. State use tax receipt increased by about three percent. Charges for services are down about eight thousand dollars, or twenty-nine point one percent due to lower ambulance fee collections compared to last year. Fine revenue is approximately thirteen thousand six hundred dollars, or a hundred and forty percent higher than the prior year. Level ticket revenue is about nine thousand higher. Fines were increased in October of two thousand nineteen. Miscellaneous revenue is about twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars, or sixty-four point two percent greater than last year due to the timing of lease and rental payments. Total general fund expenditures are at four point eight percent of the annual budget and about ninety-nine thousand dollars, or eighteen point eight percent lower than last year. All departments are within budget expectations. And that concludes the finance report. Mr. President, there are no action items.
Thank you, Trustee. Okay, moving on to other reports. Uh, Village Clerk, Megan, did you have anything else to add?
No other report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Village Treasurer?
There is no report tonight, Mr. President.
Commercial revitalization, trustee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I have three items to report on. The new public parking spaces on North Beach Avenue immediately north of Thirty-First Street are substantially complete. The new parking area includes eight parking stalls and features a red stamped brick design. A new sidewalk was also poured adjacent to the parking spaces. Landscaping in the islands bordering the spaces will be completed by the fall. Second item, Mr. President. With the transition to Phase Three on May twenty-ninth, many of the village's restaurants are now offering outdoor dining. Matone's new outdoor dining area is now open, and Panera's Bill's Place and Posto Thirty-One have expanded their existing outdoor dining areas. The village has encouraged all of our restaurants to consider an outdoor dining option. In order to provide additional, third item, Mr. President. In order to additional, to provide additional support to businesses, the village has offered to include a promotional insert in the summer edition of the rose clippings. All brick and mortar businesses in the village will encourage to resubmit, submit a logo, message our coupons for inclusion at no cost to them. Look for the special insert in the upcoming July edition and help support our local businesses. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Cussera. Village Engineer, Mark?
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
And our village attorney, Kathy?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to approve committee and collectors' reports as presented. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Motion. Go ahead.
You have a mo- second? Any just, any comments at all? Megan, call the roll.
Uh, Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel? Trustee Seidel?
Megan.
Thanks. Uh, the motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, I have a couple of items. Um, one item is tomorrow I'll be filming a Zoom meeting with, uh, Jay Byer at Flumet Place, um, and I want to thank Julia for, um, giving me quite a bit of information for this presentation, um, and it's amazing the amount of work that our staff and all the departments have done during the, uh, pandemic here. It's, uh, to see it on paper and to see all that we have done to, uh, provide safety for our residents is something to be, um, really commended. So Julia, staff, family, everybody, all the department heads, uh, as I speak for the board, through all of what we've gone through the last three months, you guys have been nothing short of stellar, so thank you. I have, uh, Julia and I met with, with Kevin Hector, who's a resident, on Friday, um, with Chief Contois. Uh, Kevin had some great comments. He had some questions. He's an enthusiastic, community-minded individual, similar to Jermaine, who we met with two weeks prior. Um, if anything has come out of these situations, it's the interest of our community and the, in the doings of, of our staff and what's happening in our village. Um, so I want to, you know, thank those individuals and residents for coming out and asking to meet. Uh, they've all been very supportive. Um, obviously, there are some questions that they had, but, um, nothing was confrontational. It was all very supportive and informative, and they look forward to working with, with the village down the road. I have one-
I have one item, and that's the local state of emergency review. I won't, I won't read the whole review. We've talked about this, we've extended it and extended it, so why don't I just open it up for the board? You all read it. The question is whether we keep it going or stop it at this point. So I'll open it up to the board if you're prepared to discuss, and I'll start with you, trustee Lawner.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you might have imagined, I think I am inclined to let it expire at the end of June in that I think that we are moving into phase four. And I think that, you know, and again, in the past, there was never any, any question about you at the helm and needed to be able to move very quickly. But I think we're at a point where we can go back to what we would consider typical or normal operations in that regard, and I would be inclined to let it expire at the end of the month.
Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would concur with trustee Lawner. I think we've done a good job. I count on the residents to be responsible. As we're moving into phase four, I think state of emergency might be a little more than is needed. Again, I'm counting on the residents, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Messick. Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely concur with trustee Messick and trustee Lawner, and I did not get them mixed up with this, with this conversation. Two of our primary pieces with the village is village safety to our village residents and building business development. I have visited all of our restaurants that have had patios opened up. I have driven through many communities, and I see one thing. A lot of the communities aren't doing it right. Our residents and our businesses are doing it correctly. And I think if people do things correctly, everybody's going to be fine, and we're going to bring our, although not huge local economy, but our local economy to a better present. I trust our businesses to keep everything safe through masks and social distancing. And just as importantly, I know that our chief, Tim Kontois, if somebody isn't doing it right, we'll make sure they start doing it right or won't open their doors again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Casera. Trustee Zora?
Thank you. I agree with what everyone else has said. I think it's fine if we expire, it expires now, but I just have a question. If things go south in the fall, is it something that we can discuss again?
I think, I think we can break up anytime the board feels we should go down that path again. Kathy?
Okay. You've got the authority to declare another emergency situation, and we start the whole process over again.
Okay, thank you.
And trustee Sidell?
I concur, Mr. President, with the other comments of my fellow trustees. So I agree as well.
Thank you, trustee Sidell. I don't want to be a dead horse, but again, I'm comfortable with where we're at. I think the staff has done a remarkable job in preparing us and getting us through. So let's hope that things continue down, spiraling down the way that they have. Okay, any public participation of non-agenda related items? If anyone is on the line that's from the public, would they care to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Notice for public hearing in special village board meeting to be held remotely on Monday, June 29th, 2020, at 7:30 p.m. There's the ability to join the meeting from your computer, tablet, or smartphone with the access code or dialing in the phone number, and this public hearing is for the sewer grant. I do want to, during the sewer grant, I do want to make one other comment that I failed to make. Friday, we are meeting at 1 o'clock with residents around the area of Homestead in Monroe who have gone through the experience of severe flooding, and we're applying for this grant to help subsidize correcting that area. So we have, I believe, three legislators coming up, Zaleski, Welch, and Landec, I believe. Is that correct, Julia? Senator Landec, Representative Zaleski, and Representative Welch. We're going to present the plan to the community, and with the senator being there, hopefully we can persuade them that this is a vital, vital project that we need to get done and we need funding for. So that will be at 1 o'clock at Memorial Park on Friday. Any new business? Okay, trustee Messick, motion to move into executive session?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body according to ILCS 20/2C1, not to resume to open session until the village board work session, 14th, 2020, 30 p.m.
Second? We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Sidell?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. I want to thank all the residents that were in on the meeting tonight. Jermaine, I can see you, so thank you. Julia, you have something?
No, I'm just facing everyone.
You were waving to Jermaine? Okay. Again, and all the residents that participated tonight are listening. So we will move to executive session. Why don't we take about a three-minute break?
Okay.
Okay, so hook up, dial out, and then dial back on, and we'll see you back in a couple minutes. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.